Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels available on Comcast Channels 98 and 22. Channel 98 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by S.AU 16 and can be found on Channel 13 with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Bi-Weekly Report with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV and hope that you tune into our other content as well.
6:45, I will call the meeting to order. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the December 6, 2021 Exeter Select Board Meeting. I will wait and introduce the board in a bit. First, we're going to go into non-public session briefly, and as such, I would entertain a motion to go into non-public under RSA 91A3:2A.
So moved.
So moved.
Madam Clerk?
Selectwoman Roundtree Oliphant.
Aye.
Selectwoman Cowan?
Aye.
Clerk says aye, Mr. Chair.
Aye. It's unanimous, we'll be in non-public.
Into public session. And I want to thank everybody for their patience that went a little longer than we thought, but we are ready to jump right into public session again. Good evening, Exeter, and welcome to the Exeter Select Board December 6, 2021 meeting. I'll start by introducing the board to my right, Selectwoman Levy Rond Trioliff. Good evening.
Good evening.
Our vice chair, Selectwoman Molly Cowan. Good evening.
Hi, everyone.
Our clerk, Selectwoman Julie Gilman. Good evening.
Good evening.
And our town manager, Mr. Rustine.
Good evening.
Our recording secretary, Joanna Bartel. Hi, Joanna. Good evening. And I am Nico Papakosinides. We are going to, with the board's indulgence, do the bid opening towards the end of the agenda. We do have some presenters here this evening. And looking at the time, I'd like to jump right in. Before we go to public comment, I would like to just mention at our last select board meeting, towards the end of the meeting, I believe it was right after select board committee reports, the board was still in public session. Selectman Daryl Brown tendered his resignation from the select board effective the end of that meeting. The board had a public discussion during the meeting about the options, obviously with the open seat that will go on the ballot in March for the remaining one-year term. The board does have the option to appoint somebody to sit in the seat between now and the election. My recollection from the conversation is we had a discussion, we have three months, basically, until the election. And I think the board came to the conclusion that by the time interviews were had, we reached out to folks, we would already be in the budget season. And unless I'm remembering incorrectly, I think it was the consensus of the board that we would continue with a four-person board between now and the election. Any further discussion from the board, or did I not understand correctly?
Were you able to speak with our town attorney, just to confirm that that was...
Yes, thank you. Mr. Dean and I both spoke respectively to council. Council advised that it is the board's option to either appoint or not appoint. Council agreed that where there's only three months left, that certainly, you know, within the board's prerogative to continue as a four-person board, council agreed that it could be more interruptive than not. Obviously, if the vacancy were going to be in a longer period of time, then that would be a different story. Mr. Dean, did you want to elaborate? I know you have something in writing from council.
Yeah, I do. And I think council's comment on this was, you know, giving the timing of the resignation, the board certainly may decide not to fill the vacancy and just let someone run for the remainder of his term in March. In fact, at this time of year, many towns choose to do exactly that because they don't want to give any candidate a leg up at the election by appointing them in the interim. So that's one comment that was made. One of the other comments was just that the filing period begins January 19th. So even though the election is three months away, the filing period for candidates is actually a lot closer than that.
And that would be for the remaining one year of the term.
Correct.
Correct. Okay. Are there any other comments from the board? So we will continue as a four-person select board between now and the election. When we get to the 2022 calendar later in the agenda, I'm going to make a suggestion that we not approve the schedule yet until the board can go and look at our respective calendars, because it's going to be imperative that we have a quorum going forward between now and the election. So we can discuss that when we get to the calendar. Last but not least, we all had an opportunity to speak to Selectman Brown publicly at the end of our meeting. But once again, I would like to thank him for his service. It was a pleasure working with him. He brought a lot to the board, and he's going to be missed. We respect his wishes, and we wish him all the best. Thank you. Moving on to public comment, this is an opportunity for the public to comment to the board on anything if it has anything relation to agenda item. We ask that you wait until that particular agenda item comes up. I'll pause for a moment. And seeing no public comment, we will move on to the approval. We don't have any proclamations or recognitions, so we will jump to the approval of the minutes.
Nico, Don Clement has hand raised.
Oh, I beg your pardon. Forget about the Zoom. Mr. Clement, we're ready when you are.
Good.
Hi, we can hear you, Don. Good evening. Well, we could hear you.
I have been becoming quite concerned about the COVID situation, that the trend seems to be going in the wrong direction, both on a nationwide basis and in the state of New Hampshire, to the point that our hospital, Exeter Hospital, is filled to capacity overflowing. So I would like to ask the board if they would please consider, at some point in time soon, reinstituting the mask mandate in town that we had, that the board had imposed sometime last year. I think it's imperative that we do this to stem the COVID, so it doesn't become worse than it is right now. And I know it's around the Christmas season, but I won't...
Into public session. And I want to thank everybody for their patience that went a little longer than we thought, but we are ready to jump right into public session again. Good evening, Exeter, and welcome to the Exeter Select Board December 6, 2021 meeting. I'll start by introducing the board to my right, Selectwoman Levy Rond Trioliff. Good evening.
Good evening.
Our vice chair, Selectwoman Molly Cowan. Good evening.
Hi, everyone.
Our clerk, Selectwoman Julie Gilman. Good evening.
Good evening.
And our town manager, Mr. Rustine.
Good evening.
Our recording secretary, Joanna Bartel. Hi, Joanna. Good evening. And I am Nico Papakosinides. We are going to, with the board's indulgence, do the bid opening towards the end of the agenda. We do have some presenters here this evening. And looking at the time, and looking at the time, I'd like to jump right in. Before we go to public comment, I would like to just mention at our last select board meeting, towards the end of the meeting, I believe it was right after select board committee reports, the board was still in public session. Selectman Daryl Brown tendered his resignation from the select board effective the end of that meeting. The board had a public discussion during the meeting about the options, obviously, with the open seat that will go on the ballot in March for the remaining one-year term. The board does have the option to appoint somebody to sit in the seat between now and the election. My recollection from the conversations, we had a discussion, we have three months basically until the election. And I think the board came to the conclusion that by the time interviews were had, we reached out to folks, we would already be in the budget season. And unless I'm remembering incorrectly, I think it was the consensus of the board that we would continue with a four-person board between now and the election. Any further discussion from the board, or did I not understand correctly?
Were you able to speak with our town attorney, just to confirm that that was?
Yes, thank you. Mr. Dean and I both spoke respectively to council. Council advised that it is the board's option to either appoint or not appoint. Council agreed that where there's only three months left, that certainly, you know, within the board's prerogative to continue as a four-person board. Council agreed that it could be more interruptive than not. Obviously, if the vacancy were going to be in a longer period of time, then that would be a different story. Mr. Dean, did you want to elaborate? I know you have something in writing from council.
Yeah, I do. And I think council's comment on this was, you know, giving the timing of the resignation, the board certainly may decide not to fill the vacancy and just let someone run for the remainder of his term in March. In fact, at this time of year, many towns choose to do exactly that because they don't want to give any candidate a leg up at the election by appointing them in the interim. So that's one comment that was made. One of the other comments was just that the filing period begins January 19th. So even though the election is three months away, the filing period for candidates is actually a lot closer than that.
And that would be for the remaining one year of the term.
Correct.
Correct. Okay. Are there any other comments from the board? So we will continue as a four-person select board between now and the election. When we get to the 2022 calendar later in the agenda, I'm going to make a suggestion that we not approve the schedule yet until the board can go and look at our respective calendars, because it's going to be imperative that we have a quorum going forward between now and the election. So we can discuss that when we get to the calendar. Last but not least, we all had an opportunity to speak to Selectman Brown publicly at the end of our meeting. But once again, I would like to thank him for his service. It was a pleasure working with him. He brought a lot to the board, and he's going to be missed. We respect his wishes, and we wish him all of the best. Thank you. Moving on to public comment, this is an opportunity for the public to comment to the board on anything if it has anything relation to agenda item. We ask that you wait until that particular agenda item comes up. I'll pause for a moment. And seeing no public comment, we will move on to the approval. We don't have any proclamations or recognitions, so we will jump to the approval of the minutes.
Uh, Nico, Don Clement has hand raised.
Oh, I beg your pardon. Forget about the Zoom. Mr. Clement, we're ready when you are.
Good.
Hi, we can hear you, Don. Good evening. Well, we could hear you.
I have been becoming quite concerned about the COVID situation, that the trend seems to be going in the wrong direction, both on a nationwide basis and in the state of New Hampshire, to the point that our hospital, Exeter Hospital, is filled to capacity overflowing. So I would like to ask the board if they would please consider, at some point in time soon, reinstituting the mask mandate in town that we had, that we had, the board had imposed sometime last year. I think it's imperative that we do this to stem the COVID, so it doesn't become worse than it is right now. And I know it's around the Christmas season, but it won't be a very merry season if a lot of us are sick or hospitalized. So I would ask you, the boards, please consider that, and I appreciate you giving me the opportunities to speak this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clement, and I'm sorry that I missed your hand. You appreciate your comment.
It's all right.
In fact, our first discussion item will be the health officer giving us a COVID update, so we'll be discussing that in a short manner of time, but we will take your request under consideration. Thank you, sir. Okay, if there are no other public comments, I don't see any other hands, we can move to the approval of the regular meeting minutes of November 22, 2021. I would ask the board at this time if there are any revisions or amendments. And seeing none, then I would entertain a motion to approve the Exeter Select Board regular meeting minutes of November 22, 2021.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in the second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion passes for zero. And Joanna, I want to recognize you. Thank you for the minutes that you've taken, not only for the select board, but for all of the other committees. Excellent, thank you. Okay, we do not have any appointments this evening, so we'll jump right into discussion items. And our first discussion item this evening is not only a COVID-19 update, but also the annual HB 79 report from our health officer, Mr. James Murray. Good evening, Mr. Murray.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, thank you.
Perfect. So Chief Wilking wanted me to apologize on his behalf. He can't be here this evening, so I'll be speaking for two tonight. I'll give the COVID-19 update first. So the COVID-19 numbers continue to rise throughout the state. The numbers I'm reporting tonight are as of Friday. I didn't see any updates this afternoon, but they should be updated sometime this evening. Exeter currently has 69 active cases for a total of 1,403 over the course of the pandemic. The numbers continue to rise throughout the state, a lot of new cases likely stemming from Thanksgiving gatherings. As of last week, the state is unfortunately leading the nation in the rate of new COVID-19 cases. Hospitalizations continue to rise as well, with some hospitals meeting capacity. The Omicron variant that has been detected in South Africa and different parts of the world is now in the United States as well. It's been detected around us. Massachusetts, Connecticut, and New York have confirmed cases of the Omicron variant. It appears to be spread more easily than the original COVID virus, but it's still unclear how it spreads when compared to the Delta variant. The CDC did put out some general information as of this evening. Much of it comes with the disclaimer that there's a lot we don't know about this variant at this time. The initial reports seem to indicate that Omicron variant is less severe in terms of illness, which is hopeful news. There are concerns about how it may impact individuals, but so far, the CDC states that it expects vaccinations to still prevent severe illness, hospitalizations, and deaths due to infection even with the Omicron virus. Again, there's not a lot we know at this time when it comes to that. Onto what we've been doing, the fire department will be putting on a booster clinic for town staff tomorrow throughout the day. We are also handling the logistics and coordination for the Booster Blitz event this weekend that's happening the 11th in Stratum. We've been helping the other municipalities in the area and the Seacoast Public Health Network when it comes to coordinating a lot of these clinics. We're kind of the central hub, in effect. The vaccines are shipped to the Exeter Fire Department from the state, and from there, we organize vaccines and supplies to give to other communities. So we're continuing to do that, as well as host our own clinics. We have our second-dose clinic for the five-to-11-year-olds will be this weekend as well, on the 11th. The first-dose clinic, a few weeks back, went pretty well. We had about 306 doses administered, and the second-dose clinics usually go smoother than the first, just because we have the numbers hammered out, a better flow. But we had a really good turnout last time. We're hoping to have another good day this Saturday. We continue to encourage individuals that are on the fence about the vaccine to please talk to your doctors, your healthcare providers, and consider it. Right now, it's the best tool we have to prevent serious infection. We also ask that individuals continue to utilize other tools we have, such as social distancing and wearing masks, as well as finding alternatives to large gatherings or meeting in person. I've also reached out to the state to see about securing some tests for town staff. As of today, I got a point of contact, and I'm waiting on a response, but we'll see how that goes. Unfortunately, the free-at-home tests ran out rather quickly last week. I think that within 24, 48 hours, they were completely gone. So a successful campaign, for sure, but we're still trying to get some of those for town staff. Any questions on the COVID-19 update?
I have a question.
Yes.
Have there been any executive orders or any action from the governor's office to help stop the spread or slow the spread of COVID?
There has been the Booster Blitz, not an executive order, but at least programs to help slow the spread. But as far as I'm aware, no other executive orders or emergency orders.
Okay. I mean, I'm just thinking about what we were just asked to implement during public comment, and would a mask ordinance? Could we even impose one if there's no? I suppose we could.
Are you seeing that from other? I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I was going to say, we did it last time under the RSA purview of the health officer.
Right.
I mean, I know that towns in the North Country who are seeing sort of explosions of COVID cases are doing or asking to do the same.
There was also an article about the governor releasing funds to, or organizing getting the National Guard up here to help hospitals with triage or expansion. I don't know, pop-up hospitals somewhere, something like that. Have you heard anything about that?
Not personally, no.
I haven't seen any action taken either, so that might have just been a house communication.
There's also communication from the hospital that we can make the board aware of if you're not already on the list, the listserv. That's information that's been going out on a weekly basis from the hospital regarding inpatient status. And I know Julie's been privy to some of that as a state legislator.
Mr. Murray, what are you seeing, if anything, in some of our neighboring towns? Or are you hearing anything about the possibility of entertaining some sort of a mask ordinance for indoors?
I haven't heard from our immediate neighbors. I've heard that, I believe, Claremont has been considering it. I know some towns that had the ordinance last year are considering it, but I haven't heard much specific beyond that.
What are you hearing from our businesses, if anything? Are any of our local businesses looking for us for help?
I haven't had any reach out to me specifically. For the most part, I've been focused on the vaccine and boosters.
Sure, of course, of course. And either question for you or maybe Mr. Dean, but the board, several meetings ago, implemented wearing masks inside the town office during committees and meetings due to an increase in town staff testing positive. Where are we with that, Mr. Dean?
So we've been doing that, and we've been monitoring it through Human Resources, and it seems to be going according to plan so far. We had a couple of small hiccups with it, but we're administering it day to day, and it seems to be working out pretty well.
Okay, so we don't, we're not seeing a continued rise in positive cases?
Not, no, not in positive cases. I think we've had a couple more, but not, we've had people rotating back into the workforce that have had it as well.
Okay.
If you follow me, they've been going through the 10-day period and then coming back to work.
I understand. Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Murray on COVID? Can you keep us, keep us apprised of what you're hearing, particularly locally, if our businesses are looking for help?
Absolutely.
You know, from guidance from the board? Or if you're hearing anything neighboring towns? I think Mr. Clement brought up a request worth considering, and maybe we can take that back up, Mr. Dean, on the 20th?
We can do that.
Okay. And in the meantime, if there's anything, you know, merger, we can always, we can always meet as a board, so keep us posted, please.
Will do.
Thank you.
With that, would you like me to move into the HB 79?
Please, if you would.
Okay, so as of this year, in June, an amendment to RSA 128 regarding town health officers was passed. So that requires every town in the state to host a board of health meeting, at least annually. There isn't much specific as to what the board of health meeting needs to be about, but the consensus seems to be about health departments' functionality and where we stand with things. So just a quick synopsis of the health department at this time. The local health department consists of me, James Murray is the health officer full-time, and we have, as of this year, Deputy Chief, Deputy Fire Chief Jason Fritz as the deputy health officer. The most pressing threats to the community at this time are the COVID-19 pandemic. The health department has implemented a spectrum of responses to this to meet town needs, been working with the fire department to get not only information, vaccines out there, but when we had the mask mandate, we utilized all the tools available to us to meet the demand. And the department remains active with the fire department with these booster clinics and vaccination clinics. Other health threats to the community include vector-borne diseases we see every year, mostly mosquito-borne, tick-borne disease. For that, we contract out, at least for the mosquito-borne diseases, a mosquito control program. We also see food-borne illness and environmental health threats. For that, Exeter is a self-inspecting community, so we conduct food safety inspections of the restaurants and food establishments. Those are the, I guess, the biggest health threats that we see as the community so far. I've only been here for a little less than five years at this point, so from my time here, that's what I've seen, and that's what the department's been responding to. Going into 2022, I'd like to, you know, go with some objectives for the health department. We're going to continue coordinated efforts to reduce the spread of COVID-19. We're going to hopefully train the deputy health officer in food safety inspections. He also conducts the fire and life safety inspections, so his schedule is pretty full with that. Increase the number of food safety inspections. Due to the COVID-19 pandemic, many communities have limited their food safety inspections to emergency and complaints. The Exeter Health Department followed suit with that, but hopefully for next year, we can increase those food safety inspections. Conduct a community health assessment to determine broader needs of the community, and that specifically is something that I would look to the board for help with. You know, public health program planning, things like this are really defined by the community needs, and I think, you know, working with the select board would be very helpful in that aspect. And to continue to build and foster relationships with local businesses and agencies, that's something that I try to do as much as possible as well, working with Darren when appropriate. I'll continue to respond accordingly to public health needs of the town. We'll provide updates as the board requests. Another thing that some of the communities are doing is kind of a readiness report going over the RSAs. I won't get too much into it. If any members of the board would like a copy of a readiness report, I'm happy to write one up. But for the most part, when it comes to the RSAs that are, impact health officers and health departments, RSA 128, 147, sanitary inspections and nuisances, housing inspections and communicable diseases, I'm trained and ready to respond in those fields. One question I would have for the board is, you know, not to put you on the spot, you don't have to answer it tonight, but where you think the strengths and needs are of the community in terms of public health, and where you might want to see the health department move to in the future.
That's a good assignment.
Sorry for the homework. Any questions?
No, I actually would like you to take a look at the legislative requests. They're online, right on the front page of nh.gov, or gencourt.nh.gov. Because I know there are going to be some, some, I would like your input on, just for vocabulary and argument's sake. A lot of them have to do with masks and vaccines, and as predicted. So if you could take a look at those, give me a call, I'd appreciate that.
Absolutely.
I have two thoughts, based on that homework assignment that you gave us that sort of just popped into my head. I mean, I think that the things that I would be most interested in thinking through are actual statistics on housing and food insecurity. Both of those things, I think, fall into the public health crisis.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Anybody else for Mr. Murray? We did have somebody with their hand up, Mr. Murray, but they dropped off. If they come back on, they'll, we'll try to get them on, but thank you for the homework assignment, and we'll have you back very shortly.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. Great. Okay, next on our agenda items this evening is we have the Chair of the Budget Recommendations Committee, Mr. Bob Kelly, here this evening to present the recommendations of the BRC, who started their work back in late July of this year and conducted several meetings before the subcommittees met and went through their subcommittee meetings, many of them I attended. And, Mr. Kelly, I applaud the way that you and the committee took the CIP this year and started with that, rather than ending with it. You started with it and then looked at the general budget and then followed back up with the CIP. So I won't steal your thunder, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to the board. And on behalf of my other 10 committee members, we really appreciate doing the analysis and providing recommendations to you, the select board of the town of Exeter. As Nico said, we did mix it up a little bit this year by looking at CIP first. As many of you may know, looking, if you digest the CIP, there's a lot of things on our plate as a town over the next five or six years, and so we wanted to try to organize our thoughts a little bit so that we're not operating in the vacuum of a year-to-year analysis, but more in a broader scope of, again, five or six years, and trying to normalize expenditures by the town and thereby by the residents. During the next month, I'm assuming you'll be going over the detail of the budget, and I'll be at these meetings to answer any specific questions you may have. But we put together this brief report just to provide some of the highlights, and I won't go over all of the highlights, but I would like to, you know, just emphasize a few of them, because I want you to sort of see the background that we came up with during your deliberations. In the general fund, there were a couple of items that we deliberated quite at length on. The first is the funding for two new firefighters. As you recall, last year, we had a public safety analysis conducted, and it did recommend adding two new firefighters, which, coming off of the COVID year, it was a big leap for us to add two positions like that. However, the fire department, specifically Chief Wilking and Assistant Chief Paizan, did a fantastic job this year with the fire department budget. The general increase was only about 1% over last year, which was, you know, we thought was pretty incredible, especially compared to the equipment and regulatory requirements that that department is under. So given the fact that that was a much lower-than-normal increase for the fire department, we thought that this was a good year to be doing that, again, because there are a lot of CIP and regulatory issues that the fire department's going to have to fund over the next few years. So we did recommend adding those two firefighters this year. A couple of other items, there are significant increases for regulatory testing, both with stormwater on the general fund side, water quality on the water department's side, and then river quality on the sewer side. We saw increases well into the six figures across those three departments, or those three funds, basically due to, you know, regulatory constraints and other things that have been put in place over the last year. Most of these are obviously good for the overall health of the town. However, they all came sort of at the same time, and we struggled with having, again, try to organize those and figure out how to do it. In the end, we decided that it was just something that, you know, that we had to move on from, and that, again, Public Works has done a nice job in trying to work with DES as well as EPA on some of these directives over the years. So there are going to be, you'll see some significant increases specifically in the testing and some of the facility construction requirements that we'll be conducting over the next few years. Another item on the general fund that we would draw your attention to is that the Facilities Assessment Committee has requested conducting a facilities condition assessment analysis, hiring a consultant that would work with analysis, hiring a consultant that would work with a database of all of our facilities in town, which is a great idea and would provide a blueprint for the town going forward on developing building replacements and equipment replacements within those buildings, both on the town side as well as water and sewer. Fortuitously, our Public Works folks, especially on the water and sewer side, have already been working with a consultant in this area for a number of years. So there was a lot of, there's a lot of experience in this, and we would like to, we would recommend that we leverage this experience and make sure that Public Works is fully on board with conducting this this assessment. A lot of the effort, as it were, is going to fall to our staff after this after this assessment gets conducted. You know, I understand that our committee, the BRC, fully supported the funding for this assessment, but we would, we would, we recommend that it is done with full disclosure with DPW and make sure that all the players involved in this are are signed on, because we don't, we don't need a report and analysis that sits on a shelf because we don't have the staff or the ability to take it to the next level. And this town is, you know, I've been doing various activities for the town for 30 years, and the one thing that's spectacular about this town is the quality of the volunteer boards and the quality of technical and financial experience and, but that can only go so far. It really has to fall to the staff at some point, and I just want to make sure that they're not overloaded with all the other things they have going on. So, we need to sort of work that out as a town. Water and Sewer Funds were not up as as much as we thought they might be, again, coming off of last year. We did expand the metering replacement program. We've been sort of clicking along with that over 10 years or so since we took out a bond, I think it was about 10 years ago, Russ, if I'm not mistaken, to purchase half of the meters in town, and then we were going to chip away at the other half. We've accelerated that program because, again, now we're coming up on eight to 10 years, which is about the lifetime of a meter, so we want to make sure that our town cash registers are are fully functional, and so we put a little bit more money in that area. Again, a couple of bullet points, the significant increases in lab testing, equipment, you know, supplies and general, general management and oversight of these programs is going to be required in water and sewer as well as the general fund. We did support a 10-year management contract for extending the life of of equipment at the Portsmouth Avenue Surface Water Plant. This is a multi-hundreds of thousands of dollars contract, but what it does is takes the burden off of our staff on having to maintain very complicated and technical equipment on a week to week basis. Also allows us to not have, to hire a contractor if something goes wrong, who's not necessarily up to speed on some of our equipment. So these folks, and we're already using them for for management of one of the water towers in town, and it's worked out, worked out very, very well. So, in the all, in the, in the end, looking at a, you know, sort of an overall cost benefit analysis, having this consultant do that, it's a big hit to the budget in the first year, but by year three, it goes down significantly, and it will be much better for us as we try to continue milking along the the aging water facilities in town, and again, try to either avoid or forestall spending tens of millions of dollars to replace the facilities that we have. So, we think it's a good investment. On the CIP, one of the critical, let's say, purchase that we recommended was replacing fire engine number five. The current engine, which I noticed in the parade the other day, was was number three in the in the hit parade, so I was sort of hoping it would be up number one so people could see the older piece first. But at any rate, it still looks good from the outside, but it is almost a 20-year-old piece of equipment, and there's significant deterioration underneath. As you may imagine, fire engines get wet regularly, whether it's at the site or whether it's being cleaned, and they don't, you know, especially in winter weather, they don't always dry completely. So there is some deterioration of the chassis and and some of the critical components underneath. Sort of unbeknownst to us, this just became, in fact, Russ and I had talked in the summer about deferring the purchase of this piece of equipment for a year or two. But again, this, the deterioration and also the fact that right now there's about a, you know, it's what, 100? It's it's about a 16-month waiting period once we place the order for when we get the equipment. So, if we, you know, place the order in March, we're not going to be getting the piece of equipment until sometime in the fall of 2023 anyway. So between that, other CIP purchases that we have in the pipeline, we thought that it would be worthwhile to move that up to to this year. Again, it's a $650,000 piece of equipment bonded over 10 years, but we were going to have to do it at some point anyway, and this was a good, good timing to do that. And then I guess the final significant CIP item that the the committee recommends is the purchase of the Tenhampton Road property for redevelopment into a new Parks and Recreation Operations Center. Looking at the detail, I was fortunate enough to go on a site walk. My engineering background analyzes buildings like that, so I was able to look at it really critically, and a number of other people in town have done the same, and I think it it seems like it's a home run for the town. It's a, it's a real value. It will, by all, by many accounts, shave, you know, anywhere, pick a number, but anywhere from $5 to $10 million off of future purchases because we have a piece of land that's now up against, right up against our existing park with a facility room to grow for parking, et cetera. So it, we highly recommended, unanimously recommended, purchase of that, of that property. And then you see the layout, we, you know, just for comparative purposes, we put in, comparison with previous years, again, most of the increases, especially in CIP, are due to the items that we, that I, you know, just went over. The budgets are relatively flat, which, again, we were very happy with our discussions with the departments. By all accounts, our our meetings went very smooth this year, and and they were done in many cases very early, you know, because the the town manager and the department heads did a fantastic job in coming up with a very reasonable, well-thought-out budget. So we were, it was a nice interactive process. So our final recommendations would include two other items. There are three projects that we feel are, you know, it's time to, you know, time to get going on these. One is the Pickpocket Dam modification project that has been sort of lingering around for a number of years, and the state has been somewhat patient, but also I think there have been some harsher and harsher language in the letters that they've written us. So we need to get going on that project. There are some stormwater mitigation projects and nitrogen mitigation projects regarding some of the the collectives that we are involved with around Great Bay. These all total about almost $350,000 in initiatives, and it was our recommendation as a committee, and I think with concurrence of the town manager, that we would pay for these funds out of the ARPA funds that we've received from the federal government. They seem to fit the criteria, and it would, none of these things are are initiatives that we would choose to do right now, and maybe not for another several years, but the fact that the states, the state and the feds are sort of hounding us, this would seem to be a good use since we've paid the taxes to the federal government and now it's sort of cycling back, so it seems like there's some nice symmetry to it. And then the final thing would be that there are a number of of initiatives in for Warren Articles, the Rains Barn Improvements, the Parks Improvement Fund, which the committee actually voted to increase from $50,000 to $100,000 this year because of the, you know, the benefit of, you know, looking ahead to potentially purchasing Tenhampton Road and providing the director with ample funds to be able to continue to do the work in upgrading the the parks around town. So between those two items and then funding a DPW truck and the fire command vehicle replacement totaling approximately $320,000, we recommended that these be taken out of the the general fund balance that you folks consider every year anyway, and so we would recommend these items as being part of that discussion. So again, thank you for your time, and you've certainly answered any questions here now, but I'll be here at subsequent meetings if you have any specific questions.
Any questions for Mr. Kelly? Just let him go in the German.
Well, Bob, I have to agree, I'm going to echo your sentiment that we really appreciated the department, each department, particularly after last year during, you know, the pandemic when it was at its height, of course, we're still in it, but when all the departments took a hit and decreased their budgets 10%, I was a little hesitant as to what we were going to see this year, but I really have to say that they went above and beyond to bring the BRC a pretty lean budget to begin with. So I'm going to echo your thought there. I think, Mr. Dean, when we discuss the budget next time, if you could, you know, get into the ARPA money a little bit more with the Board, I know we talked about that, you talked about that during many of the BRC meetings, but just to bring that back and then also talk about, you know, using the money from the general fund ballots.
Yeah, and I was going to say, it's, it probably is worth noting that the budget at this stage is a 2.35% increase over fiscal 2020, so it's a, it's a pretty, as as Bob pointed out, it's a pretty low percentage. And I think that part of the conversation this year will be around the Warren Articles and the funding sources and just making sure that we are cognizant of that and use that strategy, if you will, of having a few Warren Articles be tax funded and then a few more be general fund, unassigned fund balance as well as ARPA. So we'll be talking about that as part of the process as it unfolds.
Okay.
You know, from our perspective, in our discussions, in the, in the past, again, I've been doing this for a number of years, but in the past, faced with some of these federal directives, we would just say, we can't afford a new fire truck or something like that, which would be to the detriment of the town. Again, it's a lot of money, but we're going to have to buy a new fire truck anyway, and the finances and everything line up nicely this year. But if we had to, you know, lay out, you know, $600,000, $700,000 for other initiatives that we weren't signing up for, then we would probably just not afford the fire truck. But now, this year, there are some possibilities for alternative funding to allow us to sort of have our cake and eat it too. So that was sort of our thinking along the way.
So, Mr. Dean, I think we'll have at least two meetings before the budget hearing in January, if not three, but but definitely two. So, if we could carve out some time on the agenda for each of those meetings for the Board to sort of revisit the budget, and in the meantime, for the Board to go through not only the BRC's recommendations, but any of the budget item lines that we may want to discuss.
Yeah, and that's what we look for typically at this stage of the process are, is for the Board to go through the budget that the Budget Recommendations Committee has gone through and at length, and any changes or just things you want to highlight and have further conversation on, we're happy to do that.
Great. Bob, in addition to the two firefighters, the best of your memory, were there any other personnel additions off the top of your head?
I don't think so.
I think there was only one, I think there was a-
I mean, there might have been one other-
Two full, two half times to, part times to full time?
Two part time to full-
Yes, yeah, increasing their, well, with the, yeah, the natural resources, it went, you know, from part time, 29 hours to full time.
And that's to assume some work with the sustainability committees-
Exactly, which is excellent. And Dave, I think Dave Sharples is, I think, I don't know if he suggested that or who suggested it, but it was a great idea, and Kristen has been great in her role as a natural resources officer, and this would be perfect for her. So, and there might have been one other out, I got to-
The Human Resources Assistant, going from part time to full time is the other one.
Okay, all right.
That's why he's the town manager.
And that's a need that was identified and discussed with the committee as as well in their all-day meeting.
Well, that was, that was a request years ago when that, when that position was first filled as part time, the original request, I think it was back in 2018, was for full time, so that the need has been there, for sure. Okay. All right. If there are no other questions, Bob, I just would like to thank and recognize the BRC members, Nancy Belanger, Kathy Corson, Anna Grazer, Christine Suter, Christopher Ziegmond, Liz Canada, Mark Fabian, Dr. Judy Rowan, Corey Stevenson, Dr. Anthony Zwan, and yourself. Thank you very, very much.
It was our pleasure.
It was a fun budget season, as usual.
It was fun, actually, for the first time in many years.
I'm the one that usually says that.
Julie's job should be easier than-
So we'll look forward to having you back, but thank you very much for your report.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
I also want to say I really appreciate the the amount of detail in the notes. It makes a big difference with explaining why things have changed, if they have.
Indeed. Okay, moving on, we have members from the Exeter Community Power Aggregation Committee here this evening to give us an update on the committee and also the the draft extra community power aggregation plan. So I think we've got Cliff and Lou, and Stephanie, I think, is on Zoom, on Zoom. Come, come right up, and Nick. Good evening, and I'll thank you in advance for this very robust, thorough report that I enjoyed reading yesterday.
A lot to read.
It was very interesting reading. Thank you.
Well, thank you for letting us come back before you. I think it was almost six months ago that was the last time we came before the Board to to begin our discussions of community power. So my job tonight is really kind of to update you on what we've been doing and where we are. So, to begin, let me say that the first thing we did is we formed our committee, and you know Cliff, who's busy setting up our our PowerPoint program, Nick Devonshire over here, and I'm not sure you know Stephanie Marshall, she's not here tonight, she's on Zoom, but she's our fourth member. So, over the summer, we spent a good deal of time educating ourselves as to what community power is all about, and in doing so, we leaned heavily on the Community Power Coalition of New Hampshire. They're an organization that that really are the experts in community power and how community power will operate in the state of New Hampshire and how towns in New Hampshire can implement a community power program. And fortunately, we have, we have tonight with us Henry Herndon, who's here from Community Power Coalition, New Hampshire, so he's here to answer questions if you have them. Also, over the summer, we created a lot of materials to bring the ideas of community power to the community. We put together a brochure that I think you have in your packet. It's a brochure that we designed to sort of give general ideas of what community power is. There are copies of the brochure in the library also, right here in the town office. We, as you probably know, we put together a panel discussion, experts from around the state answering questions about community power that that occurred on Exeter TV about three weeks ago. We put together a survey, which we're working on now and is is out into the public, and hopefully we'll get a significant amount of return on that, and any help you can give us to to promote that survey, we'd appreciate. All of this material is on our website, and if you haven't gone to the website, I hope you do, there is, as I say, a good deal of information about what we've been doing and what community power is all about. But probably the most important thing that we've done over the summer, and I say "we", and I really have to say, it's really Cliff who did most of the work, but we put together this electric aggregation plan that you have in your, in your packet. And as you can see, it's a detailed description of what a community power program in Exeter would look like, what its goals are, how it can be implemented. So, that was a major work, and considerable amount of work, mostly for Cliff. So that was a major work and considerable amount of work, mostly for Cliff. I guess I want to say another thing too, and that is that over the summer, I think it became very clear to, to all of us that climate change is here and it's a real concern and something that's going to impact our future. And there is no single silver bullet that is going to improve the situation. And so we see that community power and, and community power trying to promote more renewable energy is, is maybe a small little bullet that will help to alleviate some of the problems of, of global warming, of climate change. And, you know, you think, well, Exeter is just a small town and what can it do to really improve the situation? It's a global situation. But bear in mind that we are joined in New Hampshire by a very large group of towns that are also looking into community power and at this very moment are probably putting together electric aggregation plans like ours. So, you know, by aggregating the, the work of all these towns, maybe we will have, have an effect. In fact, I think some towns in New Hampshire have set goals for the amount of, the amount of clean energy that they're going to employ over the years. And several of these towns have used the community power plans that they put together as, as sort of principal ways of achieving those goals that they have. So it can have an effect. And the last thing I'd like to say is that, you know, as I started to think about what I wanted to say as my way of introduction, and I remembered back to our discussions about the solar array at the landfill. And I remember thinking at the time, wow, you know, this is a great project. It's a win-win for the town of Exeter. There's no, no burden on the taxpayers, no, no money that the town has to put in upfront, and yet it has some very significant positive outcomes for the town, including maybe getting a fair amount of money into the town coffers over the years. And I see community power similarly, it's a win-win for the town. Once again, no upfront cost to the town or the taxpayers, but it has some significant value along the way, certainly in terms of promoting more renewable energy, but also the fact that over the years, it can provide funds to do some significant projects in the town. So with that, brief introduction, let me turn it over to Cliff and the PowerPoint.
Thank you, Lou. Oh, be fine.
Thank you, Lou.
Thank you, Lou. And thank you for your leadership in our group. We wouldn't, we wouldn't be here without you pulling us together. Something you just said, I think, bears some elaboration, and that is, it is a small bullet, silver or otherwise, I don't know, but it is a small bullet, but it's a really important one. I think it does, because it uses the marketplace to try to further a resolution to moving us toward more renewable energy. Does it in two ways. One, it aggregates electric customers into a large group that has some market force behind it. And secondly, in doing that and in, in seeking out renewable energy as a larger percentage of, of what we use, it creates additional market for that kind of energy. So that's really what it's about, and that's why the Energy Committee was interested in pursuing this. So the other night I had a little, this thing was a little reluctant to move for me, so. We had a public hearing a week ago. Thank you, thank you, Nick. So quickly, what we wanted to cover tonight was a short recap of what community power is and what the steps the law requires us to take in order to put it together for our community. The second is going over some of the content of the aggregation plan, summarizing it. And then lastly, talk about next steps before opening it up to questions for you. So what is community power? Like we've explained in the last time we met, it really allows municipalities to aggregate their energy demand on behalf of residents and businesses with a goal toward getting lower costs for energy and expanding access to renewable energy and other innovations. And particularly what we're interested in is expanding the, the content of renewable energy in what the default supply is for the town. I'll get into what that means in a little bit. It was enabled in New Hampshire back in the 90s, but never really used because of certain aspects of it that made starting it up very problematic. Essentially, what the deregulation did in the 90s was separate generation from, from distribution. So what we're talking about here only relates to the generation of the energy, not the distribution. Nothing changes there. Community power is essentially a buying cooperative. You can do it as an individual community, but probably don't have the, the market power to get great prices that way. So what we really are hoping is that many communities are going to join together, aggregate their demand, and then get better prices. And there's where CPC and H comes into focus as being an important part of this. Exeter has purchased power on its own for the last 10 years for the municipal government use, which you're aware of. And, and it's interesting to see that in our most recent renewal of that contract, the price that the town is getting is less than half of what the price that we're going to be facing or we are facing as of December 1st. So a lot of money being saved by the town. And there's a, there's a reason for that, is that under the law, the utility, which tries to get the best price they can, Unitil has to go out to bid every six months. They don't have the option of lengthening that and getting more stable prices. They're required to do it every six months. And given what's happened in the last six months with energy, we're seeing the consequences as they negotiated their next six-month contract. Nothing on them, it's just the market and what they're required to do. Interesting to note also that in the town of Exeter, about 8% of the, of the residential customers are currently using a competitive supplier, not using Unitil's default supplier. And the, and it about, and for businesses, it's a much larger percentage. About 40% of the energy used in town by residents and commercial users and industrial users, 40% is in the competitive market as opposed to the default market. So wrapping up on what community power is, three pieces here. One is, there's the energy supply. That's what community power is about, getting us access to competitive markets, the potential, not a guarantee, but the potential for lower cost and price stability, and the option to be a little more innovative about where the power is coming from, both renewables and potentially someday local renewable energy production. Unitil's role in distribution remains the same. It owns and maintains the power grid, delivers the power, it ensures reliable electric service, and handles the billing and customer service. And for the customers, what we hope to achieve is affordable rates for renewable power, access to more renewable power options, and other innovative techniques such as timed day rates and the development of solar or storage or electric vehicle projects. The key points here then are, community power pertains only to the purchase of electricity, not how it's delivered. Unitil will continue as is in terms of its role. It provides us community choice in how communities can choose their source of power. And lastly, participation in community power is voluntary. Under the law, customers receiving the default supply will be automatically enrolled unless they choose to opt out, but they can always opt out anytime after that. Here's what our, the law requires us to do to implement our community power program. You've already, we've already essentially done the first three of those. You've created the Electric Aggregation Committee, the committee has drafted a plan, we're soliciting public input on that plan now. Next step is really what we're here tonight about, and that is to begin to sort of hand this over to you to decide whether it should be, the town should go ahead with this and put it up for a decision at town meeting in March. I should note that there is kind of a couple of missing aspects between four and five, between that town meeting decision and the launching of the program. And that is that, number one, the PUC has to promulgate rules about this, they haven't yet. And secondly, you have to decide, once you're authorized to do it by the town meeting, whether it's a good time to start or not. You get a choice in deciding when, when to begin. And speaking with folks over in Keene, who is, I think, one of the few towns that's actually adopted and submitted a plan to the PUC, they told us that even though the PUC hasn't decided, hasn't, we don't have any rules to, to act on that plan, even if they did and it was approved, they wouldn't have act, they wouldn't have started it yet because of the market. So there's some choice there. One, back one. So after that action is taken at town meeting, there's a process of written notification that people are informed about what's happening, and they're given 30 days to opt out of it if they want to. The, the public information is held during that 30-day period to make sure everybody's informed, can ask questions. And as I said before, customers are given the right to opt out of the default service anytime within that period, or in fact, even after that period. They'll, they'll be enrolled at least initially, but then, say, two months later, they decide they don't like it, they can, they can opt out. So you can skip over that one, Nick. So just a quick overview of the contents of the plan. It has 11 chapters or sections, covers goals and how we're going to implement it, some organizational characteristics, how people will participate, how it's funded, what kinds of options we'd like to offer, and what we have so far for customer demand information, couple, a couple of other things. I'm just going to talk about a few of these. Most importantly is really number three, or at least it's an important summary of how we want to approach this, which is that, yes, we're going to take advantage of the change in the law that allows it, allows us to set it up as an opt-out power program. Secondly, we're going to, we want to offer a tier of renewable rate so that people can take the default, which will be at least at or better in terms of renewable content than the current, the current default power supply, but we'd also like to offer higher tiers of increased renewable content. We're going to operate on a competitive basis, which means that customers that are switched will be able to switch back, as I said, and with no penalty. Essentially, we want this to be, operate within the market. We want it to be, it's going to be self-funded by the rates paid by the participating customers. Town, the town will not, cannot use taxes to cover the program expenses. The town will contract for services to implement this, and this is a key point that I'm sure you've thought about, I know Russ has thought about, and that is, what is this going to take in terms of staff, time, and effort and expertise in order to run? And the answer to that is, at least looking at what other communities, especially in Massachusetts and other states, as well as the few contracts that, that we've seen in New Hampshire, is that this is essentially a contracted service, both for the operation of it, but also for the procurement of the energy costs, of the energy supplies, which are obviously critical. And lastly, and this is important, and most communities that have approached this in New Hampshire so far have all landed on this thought, and that is, we're not going to launch this because it is, people are automatically put into this program, we're not going to launch it unless we're able to demonstrate that we can secure those energy supply costs at a lower or existing with the current Unitil rate. Unitil's default rate. So you can skip right over this, Nick. I'm going to speak to the organizational structure from this chart, but essentially, if you look over on the right-hand side, town meeting approval, that's the starting point, the town is the one who authorizes, the legislative body is what authorizes this to happen, but they turn over essentially their authority to the selectman to implement it. And the selectman, in turn, turn that over to the town manager or, or designee to, to actually oversee that implementation and provide the management oversight. But as I said a minute ago, essentially, this is a contracted operation, contracted service, and that's where the big dark box in the middle comes into play. That might be the CPC and H, or it might be another third-party consultant, we don't know that, and we won't know that until CPC and H is, is more fully developed and the town is ready to procure that service. We hope it's going to be the CPC and H in terms of being able to aggregate large amounts of, of demand, but we'll see how that goes. Other players are an aggregator, that could be the CPC and H or another group that aggregates municipal energy demand, and then an energy supplier, the supplier we contract with to get the energy. There's a notification process that's spelled out in the law that, that we will certainly follow, and that, we've covered that a little bit already. It covers this 30-day notification period before the launch. Customers who are currently on Unitil's default energy would be able to decline or opt out. If they don't decline, they'd be automatically included, but they can recline by returning a postcard, accessing a portal online, or by calling a customer service number, however, that's defined in, as the, as the program rolls out. If a customer is getting their power from a competitive supplier already, that, that 8% or 10% of the customers in town that are doing that now, they would not be, they would not be automatically enrolled. They would have to opt in on their own choice. And new, new customers that come into town after this is set up and implemented would also have to opt in. And as I've said before, customers can always switch out back to the Unitil default supply. It's important if they opt into one of the higher-tier programs, that's not necessarily true. They may have multi-month or, you know, two-year commitments, and so someone who signed up to that would not be able to opt out. But they'd also know what they're getting into at the time. Operations and funding. As stipulated in the law, customers who choose not to participate in, in a community power program are not responsible for any of the costs associated with it. All, all costs would be funded through an electric service agreement negotiated with the community power consultant and paid through their power rate. And that rate has three pieces, the cost of energy, the cost of running the program- The cost of energy, the cost of running the program, that is, the cost of services, and the cost of creating a reserve, which will be done incrementally over time. The purpose of that reserve is to counter energy price fluctuations, to provide as program collateral, and to fund, potentially to fund future energy projects and initiatives the town would want to take on. And lastly, the program will be operated through a contract service provider so that it has minimal impact on town staff. This is the, an example of the tiers that we're hoping to be able to offer. The one in blue, the column in blue, is essentially the default service that people would be automatically enrolled. That's the one that, where we say, if it's not at or better in terms of price than Unitil default supply, we wouldn't launch. It would have at least the renewable content of that default, but we're really hoping it will be considerably higher than that. And I think, I think what Henry tells us is that we, we should be able to do that at the same price. Optional products, we hope to offer, one that would be, say, a 50% renewable content, something like that, and another that would be 80 to 100%. We hope that that green start one, the one in the middle, would be still competitive with the default rate, and the other would probably be a little higher. But it gives people the choice to, to, to buy into a greener source of, of energy. So last slide, which is, where are we and where are we going? We've completed the study phase, we're into the development and community education phase. We have not completed the second public hearing, that's a week from tonight. And after that, the community, the, the committee will have to make a finding, essentially, that says, yes, this is in the best long-term interest of the town. Assuming we do, then we formally forward this to the selectmen, and you get to decide whether or not to put this forward for the 2022 town meeting. If the, if that happens and the town approves it, in the implementation phase, you'll see we've talked about most of these things already. But when and if it's ready to go, in terms of what we expect to be able to get a competitive rate, and the PUC is finished with its approvals, there'll be a bidding process to select a community power consultant, service provider. The selectmen and the town manager will be working together to review those bids and select the provider. And if the rate that we're able to get from that provider is at or better than the Unitil rate, then we'll launch the program. And one more. And that's where, as Lou mentioned, there's a lot of resources that are on our website now, including the plan and a bunch of other summary resources, so we hope people will have a look at those if they have questions. And also attend the public hearing next Monday.
Cliff, that's he, that's here?
It's going to be here.
Seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock?
Yeah.
Great.
Okay.
Thank you. And that's what I have.
Fantastic. Any, any questions for Cliff, for Lou, or Henry? I had a couple, but I wanted to defer to the board first.
I was just going to ask you, what was the reception after that recent forum that you had?
There was not a lot of response.
There were, I think, 12 or 15 questions attending, that were referring to things that were on, on the, yeah. How does it come in and be from the panel?
Was it well-attended?
I think there were about 15 people.
Okay. And how are you, how are you, are you advertising it? I know, I mean, I know I've seen it, but trying to think how we can generate maybe some more advertisement for you.
Yeah, well, we're hoping that this meeting is, is one good
Right.
...source of doing that. We have, we did the, you know, the standard legal ad for public hearing, just for that requirement. We've had, we have posters up in town, we have that brochure that Lou mentioned.
I, I think promoting the website is probably the best.
Okay.
Because it's all there, all the information.
Sure. Well, the reporter for the paper's standing right over to the, he can give you a plug. Cliff, you answered most of my questions in your presentation, so thank you, but I just wanted to confirm the, the consultant that's going to take on most of this so that it won't impact town staff. I think I understood you correctly that that, the, the funds for that will come out of the rates and the, and the fees to participate, correct?
Yes, and essentially, until the program begins, there's some upfront costs for that consultant, and the standard processes that they absorb those costs as part of the, sort of the cost of doing business here.
Okay.
I would say that there are a few incidental costs that are allowed in the law that I, I think, I don't think we can avoid, things like the legal review of the contract for that consultant. Obviously, we'd need to do that before we signed on and launched the program. Some of the notification requirements, maybe something the town has to absorb.
Okay.
I, I have a question, which maybe I should be informing you rather than me asking you. But the, we established the Department of Energy this year, and the PUC falls under that. Do you have a feeling of whether that's going to delay their rulemaking on these kind of agreements?
My guess is that already has, but I think maybe Henry, Henry might be more in touch with that.
Because the way I read it, the way I read the department's going to work is that the PUC still is going to operate the way it has, but the department ahead of it gets to approve or have say in whatever the PUC decides. So there's some power wrangling going on there.
I thought someone had, maybe folks from Keene had said that they thought that the rulemaking was going to be through the Department of Energy. Maybe that's only because the PUC is part of the Department of Energy now, but...
So, yeah, that's, that's incorrect. The, the Department of Energy filed, the Department of Energy filed a petition with draft rules at the Public Utility Commission. So that's one proposal, and then Community Power Coalition, along with Cities of Keene and Claremont, and a number of vendors in the marketplace, and the Consumer Advocate and Clean Energy New Hampshire, and other stakeholders filed a joint petition with a very similar set of rules with some minor differences. So there's two proposals before the Public Utility Commission. That process has been initiated, and we're anticipating mid-2022 resolution to that.
Thank you.
We have a, a virtual attendee that has their hand up for either question or comment, so if we could let Sheri Nixon in, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and SOTC Board members. I think the community power plan is a really exciting opportunity for the town residents. It offers us the opportunity to, for Exeter to be a leader and to increase our renewable energy consumption and reduce fossil fuel use. Right now, I, I feel strongly that New Hampshire is suffering from a lack of leadership on climate issues at the state level, and our state is lagging behind all the other New England states in taking action to reduce our impact on the climate crisis. Therefore, it's imperative that action and leadership come from the local level, and this action is needed now to increase our renewable energy usage. I also think that this is an equity opportunity for the town. Right now, as was mentioned, you can opt into certain levels of, higher levels of renewable energy with optional, or alternative providers, but it comes at a cost, and, and you can also do solar at your home at a cost. But that's not available to all people, all of our residents. So I think that if we can get this program underway, this would give all our, all the residents, all the, residents an opportunity to use less fossil fuel and have a higher percentage of renewables at the same or lower price than they're currently paying. So I think that the town also has, townspeople have also shown that, that we support renewable energy projects, as we've done, mentioned the, the solar installation at the transfer station and offshore wind have all been supported widely at town meetings. So I'm hoping that we can get this on the town warrant in March, because, as Lou mentioned, there is no time to waste. We have to be on this now, and, and this is a perfect opportunity for Exeter to lead in this regard. Thank you.
Sheri, before you leave, thank you for your comment. If you could just state your name and address for the record for us.
Sure. Sheri Nixon at 17 Thornton Street.
Thank you so much for your comment. Any other questions for, go ahead.
Just one other thing I, I wanted to mention, and that is, the reasonable question is, if the PUC hasn't completed these rules, why are we doing this now? Why don't we just wait until that happens? And, yeah, there is a, a small risk there, in that we may have to go back and, and add something or change something in the, in the plan to respond to rules that may be developed. Our thought is that if we delay this, we're delaying it a year, essentially, a year and three months. And it's really not, there's really no cost in approving it now and modifying it before it's implemented to respond to the rules, rather than wait a year.
And Cliff, can folks, for instance, if they're in the, the automatic, can they at any time opt into an optional, presumably at a fee, or how?
I'm not sure how that would work. I would think so, but they may have, you know, that's a, that would be a set of customers that have agreed to that at the point where the contract is, is made with the power supplier. I would think that there's, it may, it may depend on what the cost of that energy is, whether they want additional customers at that point or not, but do you have a thought?
There's a couple scenarios. You could have a product that's fully subscribed, and then, once it's full subscription, no more people can participate. You could have another product that's more broadly accessible, and it would be at that billing cycle. So you might not get in the day you sign up, but your next billing cycle, you could be enrolled into that.
I see. Okay. Thank you very much. Great.
Yeah, I just wanted to add, if I could, Mr. Chair, that many of my questions were answered when this was first brought to my attention. I, as Cliff pointed out, you know, there were a lot of questions I had internally about the town's structure and our ability to sort of take this on, if you will. A lot of the mechanical things that he addressed tonight were really part of the understanding of how the town would be directly involved in this community power effort, and all my questions have been answered by the structure. So it looks like something we could readily adopt without, without a heavy lift.
Fantastic. Anybody else? So when can we expect, Cliff, this to come back to us for a final?
I would say maybe the week after our public hearing
Wonderful.
...from now, whenever you're ready for us, essentially.
Well, we're, we're meeting on the 20th, so...
We can meet on the 13th after our public hearing, and I think we can probably make a decision then as to whether or not we recommend to go forward.
Okay. Fantastic. Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
If I can make one clear?
Please.
Not a question, it's comments, sorry. But are you guys fully understanding why this is able to provide power at a cheaper rate than Unitil's default supply? Because I think that's kind of the crux of, you know, why are you able to save people money? And it's because Unitil has to, it cannot engage in long-term hedges. It has to go out and completely get new contracts every six months. And for that reason, starting December 1st, our supply rates went from seven cents to 17 cents. And so you're not here, but hearing about it now, but I'm sure in one month, you will start hearing about this a lot, because people's energy bills will double, and that's kind of a big deal. So if you can engage in long-term contracts, sign a 20-year agreement with a solar farm or a, you know, gas peak or anyone, but if you can engage in long-term contracts, you can avoid those spikes. And generally, if someone says, oh, great, I can, I know the price of power I can sell for the next 20 years, they're willing to give you a better rate. Now, the PUC has always kept the default supply from having long-term contracts because it ensures that there's competitiveness. But the thought process here is we can sign up the citizens of Exeter for someone who's gone out, struck a bunch of intelligent long-term contracts, and as a result, can provide cheaper power that also has a higher renewables concentration than the default supply. So Cliff says it's a win-win. That's really what it is, and I think it's important to understand, why can you do this? Why can you do this and Unitil count? And that's what you get down to.
Terrific. Thank you, Nick, for the clarification. Anybody else? All right. Thank you.
It's really exciting.
Very exciting. Did you get that, Alex?
I know. Any...
Next on the agenda, we have the Chair of the Arts and Culture Commission, Mr. Tony Colandrello, who's here to talk about the town hall survey results and a capital reserve fund proposal. Tony, I appreciate your patience very much. Thank you.
You're, you're quite welcome. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the Select Board. I'm not quite sure how to get that, that presentation off and on, but... Okay, well, while Cliff is helping me out, just a little bit of background, the Arts and Culture Commission was formed earlier this year, and we have taken on a number of tasks, and really, one of our first was to seek and actually receive a grant for the restoration of the sculpture that's in Founder's Park. We received a $20,000 grant for that activity, and so we're happy to report that, and so the sculpture will be restored without, without any cost to taxpayers. Part of what informed the scope and the role of this commission was to look to the master plan, the 2018 master plan, and as part of the steward action, there were a number of action items that the, at the time, the Exeter Arts Committee was to have a role in. That's, of course, that committee is no longer exists, does no longer exist, and it's the Exeter Arts and Culture Advisory Commission that we believe should step into that role. One of the items there was to prioritize improvements for the town hall, collaborate with the work being done by the Exeter Chamber of Commerce to make the space more user-friendly, estimate costs, and develop a 10-year schedule of improvements. The town manager has the leading role on that, and there's a number of supporting organizations, including the Arts Committee or now the Arts Commission. What we thought we could do to best inform how to proceed with that was to do a survey of residents and others who utilize the town hall to see what improvements might be needed. So back in July, we did a survey that consisted of a number of questions and some specific areas where we, we kind of thought there were improvements that were needed, and then an open-ended question that said, what other areas do you think you can use, see improvements on? And so we, well, I guess...
You need somebody to...
Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa.
You can, you can go ahead. So there were, what we asked were recommendations of, is this important, very important, or not important at all in seven specific areas? This was one on improved heating. We'll go through these pretty quickly. I know it's been a long night already. We'll go through them quickly and then get to the summary slide.
Take your time. Thank you.
So you can see a fair number of people thought this was important or very important. Go ahead, Melissa, you can go to the next one. Next was air conditioning. Again, quite a few people thought it was important or very important. Next, improved sound system. This one actually surprised me a little bit, because it is the highest ranking in terms of, if you aggregate, very important and important.
Always where...
Stage lighting. Again, these are all improvements. Improved seating. This was number two on the hit parade. And then, projection equipment. Not as, not as many people thought this was important or very important. And then a green room, which is a, a place where performers can prepare for, before a performance. And so, so what I did was I took the liberty of aggregating these so we can take a look at what, what people thought were important. And again, there were 107 respondents. The survey was open from July, roughly the end of July until a couple of weeks ago, and we had an article... until a couple of weeks ago, and we had an article in the paper advertising it. We put things on the Facebook pages, Exeter Patch, and these were some of the responses. So you can see, I tried to rank. If you looked at just very important, sound was number one, followed really closely by lighting and seating as number two and number three. If you looked at very important plus important, what you saw was, and that's the, if we're going to skip the important column and go to the very important or important, you see that the sound system was number one at 92.5%, followed by seating, 90.2%, and then air conditioning, the third. So I think, again, if we want to prioritize, I think these are, these are a good place to start. Sound system, we haven't gotten any estimates. This is really, let's figure out what areas we should focus on, and we can go from there. There were also a number of open-ended comments and questions that were submitted along with this. In fact, there were 14 pages of it, which I think may be in your packet.
Yes, I read them. Interesting.
Just one, I just added a note here because there was one improvement that was added or noted in multiple comments as a result of the survey, and that was better bathroom facilities there, especially on the first floor. And it also improved, there were some other ones about improved access to the second floor, but the bathroom really stood out as something that was, that people thought a lot about and really wanted to see as an improvement to the Town Hall. No, that's good. That's fine. That's perfect. Unless you want to. But you can see that the one that was probably the, the two that were the least important were the projection, improved projection in the green room. So I think that we've got certainly plenty of things to work on. I think there probably is some payback on the air conditioning, even though it ranks third. I think if, and I met with Director Bissin today, talking about a few things, and if you can do a few more events there during the summer, because it's really hard to do now without air conditioning, it may actually generate some revenue. You know, Town Hall is one of those rare places that generate revenue for the town, and I think the more that we can improve it while maintaining its historic nature and access for all, that it can be an important part of the town. With that, I know Mr. Dean has been working on a warrant article to establish a non-capital reserve to proceed with some additional work on fleshing out what needs to be done. And as well, he's, I've worked with him, and we're trying to pull together a meeting of the various stakeholders, Parks, Rec, ourselves, Public Works, Energy Committee, to really kind of pull together all of those activities that are happening in little pockets, but all relate to the Town Hall. So with that, I'll try to stop, and then there's just one further thing I wanted to talk about. After, after, any questions on the Town Hall survey?
Well, I think the Capital Reserve Fund is a great idea. And correct me if the commission were able to solicit donations, that's an avenue by which we could.
I believe so. I think, I think we would, we're looking at the models right now, just exactly what we would need, whether it's a capital reserve fund or an expendable trust. So, but I think the main point is that we'd be looking to set up a dedicated fund and a dedicated funding source for the Town Hall, and that's something that we haven't had before.
Because I think just in a very short period of time, you've been together as a commission, you've already achieved, you know, quite a donation. So I see you as being very aggressive moving forward. So I think that's, that's nice to be able to have that rather than have it come before the Select Board every time.
Right. So we're planning on two warrant articles to bring to the board. One is the non-capital reserve fund that Tony just mentioned, with some seed money for, say, you know, some amount of money, but say $5,000. And then also bring you a warrant article that would change the agents to expend from the old Exeter Arts Committee, which no longer exists, to the current Arts and Culture Commission. So it would put that fund under their aegis as a spending agent.
Okay.
And I think you're quite correct, Mr. Chairman, that that fund could be the receiver of public donations. If we wanted to go out and solicit for either in-kind or monetary donations, that would be a great, nice to have that. Unfortunately, it's in a little bit of limbo now because it's the Exeter Arts Committee, which no longer exists, is the authorized expending agent for that.
Okay. And then, Russ, you know, obviously, the commission's done their homework here, or done the town's homework. We've seen, you know, the ranking of where folks are looking, and it looks like HVAC between heating and air conditioning are one and two, no matter how you look at it. Is that something the Facilities Committee could possibly tackle in conjunction with maintenance?
Yeah, so we, we went out and got at least an initial quote for HVAC improvements, and basically what the dollars that came back were about close to $120,000 for the building, for heating and air conditioning improvements. So that's the number that we're working on or with right now, but we can certainly, yeah, we could certainly get involved with the Facilities Committee, and also the Energy Committee is very interested in the building as well.
Okay.
I do also think that if we are going to do something with the HVAC system, we look at some kind of disinfection system, UV sterilization, because I hate to say this, but I do think COVID will be with us for a while, and if we want to have people gather there, then we need to give them the assurance that the town has done everything they can to give them a safe environment.
And that's actually, Tony makes a great point, and that's where it brings in the ARPA funds as well as a potential funding source. So we could look at that too and see if it fits.
I just, you know, I agree with number one to the HVAC systems, that the Energy Committee is already looking at and, and I think we've approached funding the insulation of the attic of the Town Hall. So, and I think this is great. The survey's great, and the Capital Reserve, non-capital reserve fund is a good idea for funding. But my question is whether any of the funding there should be spent before we do a facilities conditions assessment so that we look at the building as a whole and not in the pieces parts of what people are looking for.
Yeah, I mean, again, we could look at, to Tony's point, if we were looking at a COVID prevention-type situation and it involved ARPA funds, obviously, we can spend those funds as, you know, on the timeline that's spelled out in the ARPA. And as far as the other activities go, we could, we could take our pacing from, you know, that time schedule that the facilities condition assessment could get done, and then we actually go in and do some of the work. So we could do that. I think, I think the Energy Committee is ahead of the curve on what they've been looking at, and I, one of the issues that's come up is how does the HVAC system that's envisioned interface with what the Energy Committee wants to do? And is there, are there conflicts there, or does it work together? And that's something that we need to sit down and talk about as a group.
Yeah, the only reason I'm bringing it up is because depending on the system that's chosen, may have an effect on the appearance of the building. And so that's something that the facilities assessment, or facilities condition assessment would be considering, you know, the envelope of the building as opposed to seating inside it. But that's, maybe that's a step we take, a baby step we take.
Well, we're sensitive to the Historic District Commission, too, and the historic nature of the building and making sure that there's adequate, we just, we wouldn't want to throw just any system out there. We'd want to, want to investigate a few different options and then come to some conclusions. Hopefully, that maintain the historic character of the building.
But I think Selectwoman Gilman's exactly right. There are a lot of people who have a little piece of this, and that's why I've been trying to work with Mr. Dean to pull together all those stakeholders so we all know what everybody's doing.
Oh, that's great.
Well, I think this was, you know, I did, actually, I read all of the comments, the 14 pages here, and a lot of them were very similar. So people are thinking of a couple entertaining answers as well. But I think this is a, this is a great start.
Thank you.
And excited to move forward with this.
Well, thank you for your time.
Any other questions or comments for Tony? Great. Thank you for waiting, Tony. I appreciate your patience. Okay, moving on briefly to Swayze Park, and Mr. Dean's got a subject for us to look at.
This is from Mr. Eastman's office, and I believe Lovey had mentioned it at one of the prior meetings, so I brought it forward for, just in case we needed it to refer to.
That's interesting.
Mr. Dean, the last time that we met with the Swayze Park trustees, I think the board had asked for DPW for looking to a couple of different questions we had, and maybe looking at some, some costs. I don't know if they had an opportunity to do that yet.
They have not as of yet. I know Mr. Perkins has had some conversations with yourself, but as far as like cost information, I don't have that.
So I did, I did take a walk with Mr. Perkins, but before I get into that, I don't know if there are any questions or comments down the center. Is there any, Mr. Dean, can we hold that up somehow?
Oh, sure.
People at home can see it, or?
May I imagine we can.
Russ, if you start talking, maybe the camera will go on.
Can they post a picture of it on the Exeter TV page?
Well, I'm seeing, it's right there. Maybe you could describe it briefly.
Somebody would be better than me at describing it. Lovey, do you want to take a shot?
Sure. I'll describe it.
All right.
Thank you.
Like Vanna White. For all the viewers out there who aren't watching the Patriots game. Here we go. My husband is, I think, the one, maybe. So hopefully, people can actually see what's happening. But the, this seemed like it might be actually a pretty good idea for compromise, what we were talking about, because over, I guess, stage left, you have the parking lot, which is the Newfield side of Swayze. And then what they would do is build out around the gazebo, so you'd still have the pathway where cars could, in theory, I would assume emergency vehicles would be the ones utilizing that. And then cars that want to just park to view the waterway would stop there. So then we continue to have that whole area from the center of the gazebo onward towards the center of town where cars wouldn't be driving through. The nice thing about this that I like is that you don't have to have those massive blockades in front of the area. I don't know what they would do on the other side, but this seemed like one of the easiest solutions. And if you walk down there, you see how much space there is. Now, what I don't know is what you're talking about with DPW is, with the work that they're doing in that area, what part are we not able to touch because of the piping and everything underground? So, but it seems like we have enough space if we work within those parameters to actually make this happen. I don't know what the cost would be, but seems like a happy median for most. Here, I don't know if you got a chance to see it. Julie, there's also a picture on the back that I guess was the starter image.
Have you seen this?
No.
So Selectwoman Gilman looks at that. That's been in Doug's office. He first showed it to me a while ago. And that's when I really started thinking about, you know, possibilities of closing it or, or keeping it open for the parking and all that. But interestingly, when I, when I took a walk with, and I, last Wednesday, I took an informal walk with Highway Superintendent Jay Perkins. And unfortunately, from what he said, was on the Newfield side, because of where the bridge is and some of the drainage, it would be very difficult, if not impossible, to construct that because of the bridge. So if you went to the Water Street entrance, it would be doable. However, because of where the river is, you'd need to get permitting from the state, which could take years.
Yeah.
So one of the things that, that we talked about, and again, it was very informal, and I, and I did, for full disclosure, talk with the Chair of the Swayze Park Trustees today, who was unavailable to come this evening, but I believe they're going to meet later this month, and I thought that it would be appropriate for them to meet and then come back so that we could have a discussion inclusive of them. But, you know, just informally, one of the things that Jay described to me that could be done now was twofold. It would, it would involve keeping the road open one way. But the Public Works Department, they're not called speed bumps. Mr. Dean, do you remember that they're speed?
Speed tables.
Speed tables.
Like at Lincoln Street.
Like, exactly, exactly, which are plow-friendly, and, you know, would obviously deter speeding, and the DPW could do that for minimal expense. And by minimal, you know, it was approximately, you know, a couple of, $3,000, $4,000. But in addition to that, and again, this isn't, I don't want to get ahead before the trustees get to meet, but one of the other options was, in addition to the speed tables, was going on the, if you're coming in from Newfield's Road to the right, you could go in five feet or so onto the grass and construct a sidewalk. Now, you couldn't go the whole way because obviously there's some trees there, but Jay said it would be safe to put a crosswalk there. And again, just, it was, it was an option that could be done relatively soon for, for not a lot of money. And again, I was dismayed to hear that the Newfield side, Newfields Road side wasn't going to be a viable option.
So before we have the Swayze Parkway Trustees return, would it make sense to have sort of, you know, those options from DPW? Because as much as I would love to have grandiose conversations about what we all dream of, if it's not a reality, then let's not do it. So then we can at least say, here are the four things that we can afford, that are feasible, that don't require losing all of our trees. Does that make sense? And then if the trustees agree, and if we agree, then it's something we can bring to the next step, and?
No, exactly, exactly. And Mr. Dean, when's the date in January, the last date that we can put a warrant article on? Refresh my memory, please.
Well, the last date is January 18th, which is the date of the public hearing. So you would, you would want to have something, I think, in advance of that, but up until then.
Yeah, I think Mr. Staples indicated that they were looking to meet probably the last week in December, looking at all their schedules. So we have one more meeting in December, which is the 20th, so it's fine. If they meet the week between Christmas and New Year's, then perhaps we can have them back before the 18th with maybe Mr. Perkins here, because I'm sure he's, he will be able to describe it a lot more technologically than I just did. But that was the overall. And then we can discuss it as a board as to what we want to.
Yeah, and it doesn't need to be, you know, a finite, you know, to scale sort of a image or just a general idea of, okay, this seems like it would be feasible, let's investigate a little further. And then we're all on the same page, because it's, I do feel like we've spent a handful of months going back and forth, and then to see that and then be like, wait, where has that been sitting? And, you know, so I just don't want to lose any more time as time is moving quickly now.
One option would be to bring Public Works to your meeting on the 20th. Does that make sense?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay. We can do that.
Make sure.
Is that enough time for them?
Include Jay.
Well, I'll have to, I'll have to check. I mean, I know.
Yeah, because the 20th is.
DPW's been short-staffed and we.
Yeah, I don't want to push them when we have actual other issues that are urgent.
I would also like to go on record and say that I would like to see as little disruption to the parkway as possible and spending as little money as we possibly can while also keeping the character of the parkway the same.
Agreed. Selectwoman Gilman?
No, I'm just imagining things, so.
About the parkway?
Yeah, just thinking, we could do this, we could do that.
All right. So, Mr. Dean, if we could have DPW on the 20th, and we'll circle back to the trustees for early January.
Got it.
Fantastic. Thank you. Okay, last on our discussion items, Madam Clerk, we have our second. Okay, last on our discussion items, Madam Clerk, we have our second reading of the speed limit ordinance. So I would ask, I would entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Motion to second and discussion. See none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Okay, the public hearing is open. And there's no public, so I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Public hearing's closed. I don't think there were any changes.
No. I think we looked up pretty quickly.
Yeah, we did.
No, all we were doing is kind of, is codifying the streets that have speed limits of 25 mile per hour, which every street does except for during school zone, or school zones, actually, which gets even lower when school's getting out and in. So we just didn't have them all listed in the, in the thing.
Okay, so Mr. Dean, the third public reading will be the 20th, correct?
Right.
Okay. Very good. Jumping into regular business.
We need to.
Bear with me a moment, we do need to do the bids, yeah. So there are no tax abatements, credits, there are no permits and approvals. Mr. Dean, why don't we do the, why don't we do the bid openings now?
Okay.
Look at all the easy types to open there.
Do you want me to go over them?
Yeah. Who the company is. Not that I'll write it very well.
The first bid is from Univar, U-N-I-V-A-R Solutions, from Morrisville, Pennsylvania.
Some of them only bid on one.
Yeah.
One component. Hi, Mr. Dean, we've talked about this before, but can we make one of the requests for proposals or bids or whatever be that, put your bid request on the front page of your proposal? So you don't have to look for it.
The bid sheet?
Yeah.
Mr. Dean, do you know what page of the? Where I'm looking here.
There was a bid, there should be a bid sheet that was included with each set of bid documents.
It would look like this. It would just be easier if they put it at the front.
Bid item number one. Sodium hyperchloride solution. 15% for the surface water treatment plan and groundwater treatment plan. Unit price per gallon delivered, $1.85.
Okay.
There's no bid for bid item two. Bid item three, potassium permanganate.
Permanganate.
Permanganate, potassium permanganate.
You have a silent N in your last name, but it's pronounced in a, just play it out.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Free flowing for the surface water treatment plan, unit price per ground delivered, $2.36. And then bid item number four, if I'm going too fast, tell me.
Nope.
Sodium hydroxide. 25% for the surface water treatment plan and groundwater treatment plan. Unit price per gallon delivered, $1.56. And the next bid is from Borden, B-O-R-D-E-N, R-E-M-I-N-G-T-O-N Corp., Fall River, Massachusetts. Bid item number one. Sodium hyperchloride solution, 15% for the surface water treatment plan and groundwater treatment plan, unit price per gallon delivered, $1.970. There's no bid for bid item number two. Bid item number three. How do you say that? Potassium?
Permanganate.
Permanganate. Free flowing for the surface water treatment plan, unit price per pound delivered, $2.390.
Okay.
Bid item number four, sodium hydroxide. 25% for the surface water treatment plant and groundwater treatment plant, unit price per gallon delivered, $1.4924. Okay, next bid is from Harcros, H-A-R-C-R-O-S Chemicals Incorporated, Nashua, New Hampshire.
H-A-R-C-O-R.
Okay, bid item number one. Sodium hyperchloride solutions, 15% for the surface water treatment plan and groundwater treatment plan, unit price per gallon delivered, $1.8050.
Okay.
No bid for bid item number two.
Uh-oh.
Bid item number three, potassium permanganate, free flowing for the surface water treatment plant, unit price per pound delivered, $2.200.
Okay.
And no bid for bid number four.
Does anybody want to give us carbon?
Okay, the next one is from Coyne Chemical. C-O-Y-N-E Chemical. And they're from Croydon, C-R-O-Y-D-O-N, Pennsylvania. Okay, you ready?
Mm-hmm.
No bid for bid number one. Bid number two, there's actually a bid.
Thank you.
Activated carbon for service water treatment plant, unit price per pound delivered, $1.6972.
Okay.
Bid item number three, potassium permanganate, free flowing for the surface water treatment plant, unit price per pound delivered, $2.0150.
Okay.
Bid item number four, no bid. And we have one more. From Shannon, S-H-A-N-N-O-N Chemical Corporation. And they're from Malvern, M-A-L-V-E-R-N, Pennsylvania.
Make sure we know where it's happening in Pennsylvania and that all these chemicals can be provided.
There we go. Bid item number one, there's no bid. Bid item number two, there's no bid. Bid item number three, potassium permanganate, free flowing for the surface water treatment plan, unit price per pound delivered, $2.57 with a minimum delivery of 36 pails. And there's no bid for item number four.
I hope he's getting the carbonate.
So Mr. Dean, do you need a motion to have the, I'm sorry.
I'm used to doing this one. Mr. Chair, I move to forward these bids to the Department of Public Works for review and recommendation.
Second.
Any discussion? See none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Opposed.
This is 4-0. That was the motion I was going to make. Okay, Mr. Dean, you're up. The Town Manager's report, please.
Okay, so just first matter of business is to report to the board that, as you may have read, we had a fire in town last night over near Mill Street. Supreme Pizza suffered some significant damage along with a multifamily home next to Supreme. So there were people out doing cleanup this morning. Fortunately, I can report that people escaped unharmed and that our fire department did not suffer any injuries of any kind, but they were able to contain the fire, but not until after. There was some pretty significant damage done there. So my understanding is that there are two families have been displaced by this, and we're looking to reach out to them and see, you know, see what we can do for them as a community and working on that. All right. Next bit of news is that tax bills are due on December 8th. So that's coming up this Wednesday is the due date. So if you haven't paid your tax bill, please come in and pay it. I also wanted to say thank you to the organizers of the Holiday Parade on Saturday, which was a great success, heard quite a bit of good feedback. And I wanted to share my thanks to Beth Dupell and Dave Black for all the hard work that they do to make the Holiday Parade what a success it is. And of course, all the elves too that help out with that. It's a great, great community event. It was really balmy weather this year, so we got lucky. One thing I wanted to bring up with the board was the notion that we would take, as you know, the Christmas holiday is coming up and the holidays on Saturday this year, which means the towns would celebrate it on Friday. But I did want to bounce the idea off the board members about having our town offices and other offices, the town closed on December 27th. That would be essentially a day in appreciation of our staff. And I know that they've put in a lot of effort over the past year and a half with COVID and other things that they've dealt with. So I wanted to see what the board members thought about that and whether you were willing to do that.
Yes.
And that would be, obviously, if they were inclement weather, DPW would be on call and normal police and fire.
Yes.
Emergency services will still be available.
That's correct. And our intent would be for those people who worked that day, we would have a skeleton crew kind of be working that day. And that anybody that did not, was not able to take advantage of that day off, that they would have a floating holiday sometime within the early stages of 2022.
Well, my personal thought is, I think, you know, given it's the public sector and there's not much you can do to reward people going above and beyond. The last two years with COVID have been really tough, and I'm all for giving staff an extra day. Thoughts from the board?
Agreed.
Agreed.
I'm going to look at the Assistant Town Manager. Did I forget anything? I have to give her credit for coming up with this concept. Very good.
Well, thank you both.
Yes, thank you.
I know staff will appreciate it.
Happy to support it.
Yes, we appreciate them, so.
Thank you very much. And that, I think, was my report.
Okay. Select Board Committee reports, Selectwoman Gilman.
Yes, I met with the Facilities Advisory Committee, excuse me, kind of reviewed where they are in their goals and whether going, you know, what goals going forward are. But we also had a review of the People GIS demo that, for the Facilities Condition Assessment that Mr. Kelly mentioned for the budget review. There is some familiarity with the product at Public Works, but the difference between what the Facilities Condition Assessment is looking at and what Public Works is using now is that People GIS does not do the assessment. They do the data input after we've assessed what we have and what we need and make the determination of replacement schedule. But it looks like it would be able to, you can carry it in your hand, carry the database in your hand, and when a technician works on something, they can mark it up right away for, you know, pay orders and, you know, keep the maintenance database up to date. Mr. Dean, the ADA study came up and apparent, and they've been told, the committee's been told that the town planner has a draft of one?
Right, there is a draft of it.
Okay, well, they would like to see it.
Yes, in fact, I got an email, I think I was actually looking at the video, and I sent a copy of the plan to Amanda Kelly.
Okay.
And I know I sent one to you, but we'll make sure that all the rest of the committee members get it.
And we didn't quite get to the DPW project list except for to go along with what the, because of the Facilities Condition Assessment, if we, if that gets funded in the budget, then the DPW project list would be included in that. So we're going to wait one more year. A couple of upcoming things that I think people will be very interested in is the Heritage Commission is having a public hearing on December 15th, that's Wednesday at 7:00 PM, to look at the, excuse me, proposal by Exxonian Properties for the partial demolition of the roof at 43 Front Street, which is the old Baptist church. They're proposing to remove part of the roof in order to make balconies for residential units that are proposed for the building. And then the next day, the next night on the 16th, the Historic District Commission is hearing from the same group with their whole proposal of what they want to do with the changes to the building. And also continuing hearing on the 8 Gilman Lane property that the Academy is proposing for demolition and then what they're actually going to replace it with. So it's going to be two exciting meetings. And hold on, one more thing. I think that's it. Yeah, I think that's it for between now and the next time we meet.
Great, thank you. Selectwoman Cowan?
I don't have anything to report.
Okay.
Planning Board on Thursday.
Fantastic. Selectwoman Montreal?
Nothing to report.
Okay. And I have Sustainability Committee tomorrow, but I did want to say it was fun to march in the parade. It was nice to see how well-attended it was, and folks looked like they were having fun. So it was nice to see after the last year and a half.
And I got to give a couple different towns' select board members a hard time about sending their trucks to us. Did you know your fire truck was in our parade? No, it didn't.
No, it didn't.
So we had some correspondence in our packet. One was from Xfinity on programming. There were several on Swayze Parkway advocating to keep it closed and also some other options. And, but I would like to bring to the board's attention an email written to the Town Manager's office from United States Army Major Andrew Shriver requesting consideration for trees and a plaque that would be funded by a grant. Mr. Dean, has your office looked into this any further with Major Shriver?
Not yet, no. We wanted to get some input from the board and some direction on it.
Well, I'll weigh in personally. I thought it was a great idea. But I'd like to hear everybody else. Is in favor? Selectwoman Gilman? Okay, so Mr. Dean, could you look into that?
We will.
Fantastic, thank you. Okay, the board calendar. We're definitely meeting December 20th. And in our packet, we have the proposed 2022 meeting dates. However, upon first review, I saw that March 7th is the day, or the night, rather, before the election. And we usually don't meet the night before the election. Mr. Dean, so maybe if we could revise that. But given that it will be the four of us between now and March 8th, if everybody could take a look at this, look at your calendars. If you know you can't make one of the meetings, let's discuss that on the 20th because it's going to be very important that we have a quorum for the all four of us ideally. So Mr. Dean, if we scratched the 7th, then presumably the 28th?
28th.
So if we can pencil that in and again, review your calendars.
That's January 28th?
February.
February 28th.
Yeah.
Wow. Or I won't be here.
On the 28th?
Most likely, yeah.
Okay.
That might be school vacation week, I'm not sure.
It is.
Yeah.
My team travels for national, so if they're going, then I would be here.
So I guess looking at this quickly, if we look at January 3rd, the 17th, 17th, we can't change. We have to be here. January 3rd, the 17th, 31st. February 5th is deliberative session. February 7th, 21st, the 28th. And I know Selectwoman Roundtreeoloff can't be here the 28th. But if everybody could look at those dates and let's make sure that we have. And Mr. Dean, you know, if Selectwoman Roundtreeoloff is not going to be here, it's taking a chance if somebody's ill. I don't know if, maybe we should reconsider the 28th.
Well, I think we should just wait. Maybe, it's still early. I don't know what the world's going to look like next week, so.
I have a, I'll tell you, I have an appointment in Boston. A 4 o'clock appointment in Boston, so.
On the 28th?
Yeah, unless my husband drives me. Hopefully, he'll make it tonight.
We can take between now and the 20th and look at our schedules. We can revisit that.
I did just find one typo. January 17th should actually be the 18th. And that is Tuesday night, but it's the 18th, not the 17th.
Because of the holiday.
Yep. Right.
Okay. There's no other business. Unless there are any other comments or anything, then I would seek a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? We stand clear and thank you. Good night, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you for tuning in to Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels, available on Comcast Channels 98 and 22. Channel 98 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates.